They're polite. Okay, we just came back from a closed session. Report on closed session?
Nothing to report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tim Kavanaugh, would you lead us in the pledge?
Yes, sir. We all be standing ready to give the pledge allegiance, ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Councilmember Littler.
Here.
Councilmember Lou Evinos.
Here.
Councilmember Judge.
Happy to be here.
Mayor Pro Tim Kavanaugh.
Happier to be here.
Mayor Mashburn.
Here.
Agenda review. Anybody have a problem with the agenda? Everything's good? Okay.
I move that all resolutions and ordinances presented tonight be read in title only, and all further reading be waived.
Second?
We'll vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, we've all reviewed the agenda well. Is there any declaration of conflict? Seen none?
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, the first item on the agenda is 1D Special Presentations on Resolutions and Proclamations. 1D1 is a presentation of a proclamation declaring the week of May 5th through May 11th, 2019, as Public Service Recognition Week, and Samantha Argabright is here for this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Mashburn and members of the City Council. The city is recognizing Public Service Recognition Week to acknowledge the hard-working employees of the city across all departments. This evening, I would like to welcome Commander Steve Shorts, Vice President of the Police Managers Association, Sergeant Tim Wiedemeyer, President of the Simi Valley Police Officers Association, Officer Jason Wilkinson, Vice President of the Simi Valley Police Officers Association, and Nancy Fisher, President of SCIU, representing the city's general unit employees, to accept the proclamation. If you would all please come forward. Whereas the citizens of Simi Valley are served by the public servants of the City of Simi Valley and the Police Department, City Hall, Public Works, and Simi Valley Transit; and whereas all of these public employees have taken not only jobs but oaths of office to serve, and in the event of a disaster will be called away from their own families to provide assistance to the whole community; and whereas public service is not just a vocation but a calling that serves the greater good and is not driven by profits but quality of life; and whereas public servants include customer service workers, computer technicians, administrative assistants, and program coordinators who provide diverse services with efficiency and integrity, often during evenings and weekends because that is when the citizenry can engage in the public process; and whereas public servants at every level provide continuity in a democracy that regularly changes its leaders and elected officials; now therefore the week of May 5th through May 11th, 2019, is hereby proclaimed Public Service Recognition Week in the City of Simi Valley to acknowledge the accomplishments and contributions of all of the employees of the City of Simi Valley, presented this sixth day of May.
So it's not often that we get to recognize all of our public servants. Today is the day, and you might recognize them from being out on the streets working for a team in our city and keeping everything operating within the city. We certainly appreciate the hard work that goes into keeping the city operating. So with that, I'll just give it to you. Do you want to read it? You're more than welcome to read it.
Just on behalf of the general unit, I'd like to make all the effort of this recognition. It means a lot. It's very difficult times right now. Morale is down. We struggle. Our goal is to support and keep this city working. Most of us live here and want to see it be successful. So we appreciate the acknowledgement and we welcome you, Brian, as our interim. We look forward to positive influences that you might have obviously in our city. Thank you.
Well, I didn't know I had to do a speech, but I'm never philosopher of words. But thank you for the continued support. The police managers, too, are obviously invested in the community. We want the community to be safe. We want to continue our partnership. We appreciate the support of council and all the other departments within the city. And we just want you to remember that we're here, and we're here to work with you in collaboration. Thank you.
I'll make this very quick. I'll echo what Steve just said, and again, thank you for the support. We do appreciate it. Times are very difficult for us with a lot of legislation that is not making things very easy for us, but the community's support stands out best. So thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, the next item is 1D2, Presentation of a Proclamation Declaring the Week of May 5th through May 11th, 2019, as Municipal Clerks' Week. And Interim City Manager Brian Gabler is here for this presentation.
Thank you, Julia. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, we are taking this opportunity to recognize a hard-working group within the city, those folks that keep us honest in the city clerk's office. Kai Spangler, a city clerk, if you can come down. Whereas the Office of Municipal Clerk is a full honored and vital part of local government that exists throughout the world, and whereas the Office of Municipal Clerk is the oldest among public servants and provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and the agencies of government at all levels; and whereas municipal clerks serve as the information center on functions of local government and community while pledging to remain neutral and impartial, rendering equal service to everyone; and whereas municipal clerks continue to strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the Office of the Municipal Clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations. Now therefore, the week of May 5th through May 11th, 2019, is hereby proclaimed Municipal Clerks' Week in the City of Simi Valley to demonstrate what a vital service they perform and their exemplary dedication to the community, presented this sixth day of May, 2019.
So this is a very personal thing, in a sense. Each of us that have run for office had to deal with Kai. And it starts out as having to deal with Kai, and pretty soon it turns into relying on Kai to keep us going in the correct direction. And she is, when you look up leader, there should be a picture of Kai. She has a way of making you do everything you're supposed to do, and somehow she gets us, even myself, to get it done on time, but she never gets angry. She just is persistent and at the same time educational. And I, for one, so much appreciate the numerous times now that I've run for a position, and you've helped me through all those hurdles. And I never got bruised. It was great. And I think you were there ready to slug me a couple of times, but you chose not to, and instead you educated me, and we were able to accomplish things. But it's a job or a career that most people don't realize takes place in our city. And I just want to say for myself, speaking, I think, for the entire council, that you do a tremendous job, and we all appreciate everything you do for us.
And I would be remiss if I didn't point out Julia Fritz and Linda Schwartel, who's not here this evening. You cannot do this job on your own and without individuals like Julia and Linda and all other clerks throughout the communities. We try to help things run in the background, and we try to make sure our elected officials stay happy. So thank you very much again for being here.
And we stay legal this way, too.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, the next item on the agenda is 1D3, Presentation of a Proclamation Declaring the Month of May 2019 as Older Americans' Month. And Robert Martin is here for this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Mashburn and members of the City Council. Janet Plant is here this evening on behalf of the seniors in our community to accept a proclamation proclaiming May as Older America's Month. After her retirement from her senior living and memory care industry, Janet has continued her devotion towards helping others by dedicating her time to volunteerism and advocating for seniors in the community. Janet is currently the Chair of the Executive Board of the Simi Valley Council on Aging, where she is responsible for providing leadership, coordinating volunteers, and fundraising activities, and helping identify community needs. Janet also serves as a member to the Ventura County Arts Collaborative, where she helps promote the arts and education to the community. Additionally, Janet is a member of the Simi Valley Women's Book Club, which promotes literacy in the community. Janet also continues to contribute to the care and well-being of the community's senior population through her work with Long-Term Care Service of Ventura County, Inc. Unbundment Program, serving as an advocate for residents in nursing and assisted-living facilities throughout Simi Valley. Janet has demonstrated exemplary leadership and dedication to serving seniors and is a testament to the value older Americans bring to our community. With great pleasure that I now read this proclamation. Whereas the City of Simi Valley includes countless older Americans who enrich and strengthen our community through their involvement on various boards and committees, volunteering in various capacities, and re-entering the workforce; and whereas the City of Simi Valley includes over 17,500 residents 65 years of age or older and is committed to engaging and supporting older adults, their families, and caregivers; and whereas the City of Simi Valley is committed to providing opportunities that promote physical, mental, social, and emotional well-being for seniors, which enhance an individual's wellness, independence, and financial stability; and whereas the City of Simi Valley recognizes the importance of promoting home and community-based services and resources that provide older Americans with critical services such as nutrition programs and social services that help prevent food insecurity and help promote self-advocacy; and whereas the City of Simi Valley acknowledges the contributions that older Americans make to local workforces and community volunteerism as well as the benefits their contributions make to local agencies, including the Senior Center, where volunteers donated approximately 26,000 hours in 2018, saving the city over $660,000. And whereas the City of Simi Valley is committed to ensuring that all older Americans, especially the frail and elderly, in our community receive the resources and services they need to live out their lives in a dignified and comfortable manner. Now therefore, the month of May, 2019, is hereby proclaimed Older Americans' Month. And the City of Simi Valley, in recognition of the many contributions that older Americans make to our city, presented this day, sixth day of May, 2019. I'd like to ask Janet, please come forward.
You know, when we were 14, we wanted to be 16 so we could drive. When we were 16, we wanted to be 18 so we can vote. Then we wanted to be 21 for some other reason. And then there's this big gap. There's this big gap. Simi Valley has a goal, and that goal is to make 55 so you can use our Senior Center. It is the most incredible place, and it's because of people like you, Janet. And every time I go over there, it's like, wow, this is simply incredible. I think anybody that's used the Senior Center realizes what this city and what the, I don't want to call them older volunteers, they're just good-quality people.
Seniors.
Seniors. I know what that is, what they do over there. So please go visit, and thank you for everything you do.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. If you haven't been to our Senior Center here in Simi Valley, you should visit. Doesn't matter what age you are to visit. It is one of the most robust senior centers in the country, let alone in Ventura County. And it couldn't operate the way it does without its volunteers, without the Senior Center management. Robert has been an incredible support. The Council on Aging dedicates its time, we are all volunteers on the Council on Aging, to ensuring quality of life for seniors. Very simply, all the services and resources that Robert mentioned are critically important, and it's all for quality of life. And a special shout-out to Councilmember Judge, who supports us, supports the Council on Aging. So thank you. We would like to think that we support seniors all year long, but it's nice to have the month of May dedicated to our seniors. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, the next item is 1D4, Presentation of a Proclamation Declaring the Month of May, 2019, as Making Water Conservation a California Way of Life. And Ron Fujiwaki is here for this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Mashburn and councilmembers. I'd like to invite Wanda Moyer, the city's Water Conservation Coordinator, and Scott Riggs, the Superintendent for Golden State Water, to come out and join us and accept the proclamation. This evening proclamation reads as follows. Whereas even with above-normal precipitation and snow levels, water conservation must continue as a California way of life in 2019 and beyond; and whereas on May 31st, 2018, the governor signed into law two bills, SB 606 and AB 1668, which require the state water board to establish water use objectives for retail water agencies and long-term efficiency standards for indoor use, outdoor use, and water loss to leaks by June 30th, 2022; and whereas efficient water use is the most cost-effective way to achieve long-term conservation goals and provide the water supply reliability needed to adapt to our changing environment with longer and more intense droughts; and whereas Simi Valley residents and businesses understand the importance of working together to protect our valuable natural resources; and whereas Water Works District Number 8 and Golden State Water Company are leaders in efficient water use practices and conservation efforts; and whereas throughout the year the community of Simi Valley is urged to make water conservation a long-term objective involving neighbors, friends, and family in their efforts. Now therefore, the month of May, 2019, is hereby proclaimed Making Water Conservation a California Way of Life Month in the City of Simi Valley in recognition of the importance of using water wisely, presented this sixth day of May, 2019.
So I'll be brief. Regardless of who is your water purveyor, whether it's the city or it's Golden State Water, the education process that they put the residents through to understand the importance of conservation, and more importantly, the quality, anywhere in Simi Valley, you have quality water to drink straight from the tap, and we should be very grateful for that. So with that, thank you very much.
Thank you all. We did a terrific job during the emergency drought, and the governor went ahead and made, you know, some permanent requirements last year in terms of making sure that we continue on towards our progress because of climate change. And although we had a stellar year with snowpack and rain, we cannot guarantee those supplies every year. So we need to make sure that we continue our good habits, and thank everybody for your support in doing that.
Thank you, everybody, for coming. I do want to, I think it's important, obviously the drought just ended, but, you know, we need to continue with water conservation practices. We need to make conservation a habit. Spread the word to your friends, and again, you know, our weather patterns in California are very cyclical. We're going to have droughts in the future, and so it's important we continue, again, to reiterate, to make these conservation practices a habit that you practice every day. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, the next item on the agenda is Public Statements, 2A. This is time allotted for public statements or comments on all items other than public hearing items. This evening, I believe we have one card submitted. And Mark Shear, will you please come up?
Yes, thank you. Can I stand here? Since I'm the first one? Okay. Good evening, Mayor Mashburn and City Council. I am Mark Shear, member of the Elks Lodge, number 2492, Benevolent Protective Order of the Elks. And I'm here this evening. Councilmember Mike Judge is a member, and several of the councilmembers have been at our Elks Lodge over the last few years. And I'm just here this evening to talk about being in support of the 50th anniversary of Simi Valley this October, 10/10/1969, when the city was incorporated as a city. We wanted to just reach out to the City Council and talk about perhaps having some kind of event somewhere later in this summertime, perhaps September or in October, to just show our support for the City of Simi Valley. We have had many events in the years past, and totally intend to keep doing that, supporting of the city, and incorporating with other of the nonprofits in the City of Simi Valley, perhaps the Moose Lodge, Samaritan Center, and others than that. So this is just for us to reach out to the City Council tonight, just tell you our enthusiasm to want to be supportive of that. I will connect with Samantha, I think it's, have, are we good? Thank you. I have her card. Reach out to her about putting something on the agenda, one of our lodge members, Mike Judge, and so on, and do a direct connection, and see what we can do to be supportive of the City Council and the city as a whole to commemorate that later in this year. And also, I just, if I can take this opportunity just to make mention that we have our Flag Day Ceremony that is on June 14th next month, and the community is welcome to visit our lodge on that day for the flag ceremony, celebratory of the United States of America flags that are retired. Our website, anyone can look up the Simi Valley Benevolent Protective Order of Elk genes, put Simi Valley Elks, you'll find our website, and we just love to have the community come and participate. We are about 800 members strong today, and we're growing every month. So with that, again, thank you for your time this evening and for the fine job that the City Council's been doing for many years, many of you have been serving. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, any comments?
Well, actually, I want to say thank you, Mr. Shear, for being here and for your comments. We just, a week ago, had our first event, kicked off with Samantha's assistance and direction, at the Historical Society at the Strathairn. It was a lovely event, and I expect an entire summer of wonderful events. So thank you for your willingness to be a part of that, and look forward to attending and making something great happen. So again, thank you for being here. Appreciate it.
Because she knew I was going to have a comment, right? I want to thank you, Mr. Shear, as well. I know the Girl Scouts have had many an event there at the Elks Lodge, and we're very grateful. We've participated, my daughter's troop has participated in the Flag Day ceremonies there, retired many, many, many flags. And I'm glad to offer them up again if you need Girl Scouts to help with the flag retirement ceremonies, or my son's Boy Scout troop as well. You offered to have an event there. I know that the Samaritan Center is, and you mentioned the Samaritan Center, really could use some fundraising. So maybe, you know, you and I and Samantha can sit down and maybe think about an event that we could do that would be a fundraiser for the Samaritan Center. I know they would really appreciate the help. And as our homeless population grows, I know that that would fulfill a need, and I know we have a lot of supportive people in the community that would support that kind of event. So thank you for the offer, and I will be following up with you.
Okay. Thank you. More?
You know, I just want to say a huge thank you again to all of our city employees. You guys are phenomenal. You guys are the foundation of Simi Valley. You're what makes the city run. Never have I worked, well, I can't say never because I'm a teacher, so I work with very dedicated individuals, but so many of you remind me of the dedication and education.
This is only for response to the public comments, even though it's a great, obviously, it's response to the prosestations, but it probably should be at, maybe the council reports or somewhere like that.
No, this is just to thank, you know, because of the proclamations for our clerks and our public servants who work so hard for the city. Thank you for your dedication. I know many of you work long and hard hours. You come here early, you stay here late. Many of you were.
Pardon me, councilmember Evinos, I'm saying it's not on the agenda.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Shall I move on? No more comments.
Appointments.
The next item, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, is Agenda Item 31, Appointments. Adoption of a Resolution Ratifying the Jurisdictional Joint Appointment of the Resident Commissioner to the Area Housing Authority of the County of Ventura Board of Commissioners. The resolution for your consideration is as follows. Resolution Number 2019-16, A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Simi Valley Ratifying the Jurisdictional Joint Appointment of Angela Bradley as Resident Commissioner to the Area Housing Authority of the County of Ventura Board of Commissioners. Eric Chen is here for this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. The Area Housing Authority of County Ventura requests your endorsement of a new resident commissioner to represent the housing authority's public housing residents. The Area Housing Authority serves seven jurisdictions in Ventura County, including Simi Valley. It is governed by a 15-member Board of Commissioners. Each jurisdiction appoints two commissioners, and one resident commissioner is appointed at large. Earlier this year, the Area Housing Authority interviewed three eligible applicants and subsequently nominated Ms. Angela Bradley of Ojai as the candidate to fill the vacant position. Ms. Bradley is not in attendance tonight. It is recommended that the City Council adopt a resolution ratifying the jurisdictional joint appointment of Ms. Angela Bradley for a two-year term as new resident commissioner to the Area Housing Authority of the County of Ventura Board of Commissioners, commencing June 1st, 2019, through May 31st, 2021. This concludes staff report. I'm available for your questions.
I move to adopt a resolution ratifying the jurisdictional joint appointment of Ms. Angela Bradley as a resident commissioner to the Area Housing Authority of the County Ventura Board of Commissioners. I'll second it.
Motion passes unanimously. Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, the next item on the agenda is Item 32, Appointment of a Second Alternate Representative to the Clean Power Alliance. And Samantha Argoprite is here for this presentation.
Thank you for your indulgence. I was just chatting with the nice man from the Elks Lodge, so a little slow. Good evening, Mayor Mashburn and members of the City Council. This evening, it is being recommended that the City Council name me as the staff alternate to the Clean Power Alliance. So currently, the City Councilmember Loewenos serves as the city's director to the Clean Power Alliance, and Mayor Mashburn serves as the city's alternate director. The former city manager served as the second alternate at the staff level. In the event City Councilmember Loewenos or Mayor Mashburn are unable to attend a Clean Power Alliance meeting, the second alternate is empowered to vote and take actions on the city's behalf. So staff recommends that the City Council name me as the second alternate representative. Are there any questions?
I have a comment. I think it's only appropriate, if you're going to all those meetings, that you have that opportunity to vote if the others are not there. So thank you for going to those meetings and serving and being willing to step up. So, thank you.
I agree, and every time the mayor has a question about the alliance, he goes to Samantha.
I move to appoint Samantha Argoprite as the city's second alternate representative to the Clean Power Alliance. Second.
All right. Next item, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, is Agenda Item 4, the Consent Calendar.
Pull the item on the consent calendar.
I do, I just have a couple of questions.
Okay. We're going to pull Consent 1.
Thank you. Can you tell those conferences? Are you coming down here to answer questions? Okay, thank you. Really, it's just some generalities. I was looking at the dollar amounts that, the standard hourly rate that our consultant charges versus what we would charge for an employee ourselves, and there's a substantial difference. So is, I wanted to make sure that this is cost-effective for us to do it this way instead of hiring somebody new.
It's, it is better to hire a permanent city employee to do planning work. That's more cost-effective to do that. This contract is actually very helpful for the city as a stopgap measure. We do have the special projects. We're trying to update this, implement this intergov project and to free up, and they provide technical assistance for that, which we don't have on staff. So that is effective. So it's just an interim program that we're trying to implement, and hopefully, within a year, will be complete with us.
Okay, so they do offer some expertise that we don't currently have.
Correct. When we were here the other night with the wireless ordinance, one of, one of the contract planners was here that evening making the presentation, as well of all the GIS and mapping and things you may see in your pack around the PowerPoint presentations, they have a special skill set when it comes to that.
Perfect. Thank you, Travis.
Any other questions?
Is this a position that you recommend that we fill eventually, next year?
We are in the interview process for an assistant planner and associate planner position. We had quite a large number of applicants, and that'll be a permanent person we would like to bring on if it is allowed. And that's a, that's a solution on another track, but this contract is hopefully separate from that.
And will they have some of the skill set, like the GIS skills, which I know are...
It's amazing, the young applicants that we're getting, GIS, housing, environmental, they have all the skill sets that we're looking for, and we'll see if we can get a good one.
Wonderful.
Comments?
I move to approve the Third Amendment to the contract with Rincon Consultants for contract planning services for an additional not-to-exceed amount of $100,000.
Second.
Call for the vote.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next item on the agenda is Public Hearings. This is the time and place set for a public hearing on the consideration of matters as presented on this agenda. Let the record show that due notice was given as required by law, and an affidavit to this effect is on file in the office of the city clerk. The reports of the city staff relating to these matters shall be made a part of the record of this meeting. Speakers during public hearings shall limit their comments to matters relevant to the item on the agenda and may be ruled out of order if comments are unrelated to the item. If you challenge in court any of the City Council decisions made here tonight, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at this public hearing. The time within which judicial review must be sought is governed by California Code of Civil Procedure, Section 1094.6. Agenda Item 6A, Public Hearing on the Community Development Block Grant allocations, the Draft Fiscal Year 2019 to 20 Action Plan and the Draft Amended Citizen Participation Plan. Julia Ramirez and Monica Dion are here for this presentation.
Okay. I have to repeat. This is time and place set for a public hearing to consider the community development block grant allocations, the draft 2019-20 Action Plan, and the Draft Amended Citizen Participation Plan. May we have an oral report?
Yes, of course. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. On March 21st, the Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee recommended that the City Council approve the Draft Fiscal Year 1920 Action Plan with the committee's preliminary funding recommendations, as well as the Draft Amended Citizen Participation Plan. In CEBG, there are three categories of allowable expenditures: public service, capital improvement, and administration. This year, staff processed three public service applications. Since no capital improvement applications were received, in accordance with city policy, the funding in this category will be allocated towards the city's annual minor streets rehabilitation program. Public services are funded on a two-year basis. Therefore, the allocations for year one will be applied to the second year so long as the applicant remains in compliance with the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development and city regulations, and the city receives CEBG funds. In April of this year, after the committee public hearing, HUD published the entitlement amount for the 1920 fiscal year. The city will receive $608,370, which is about $2,000, a $2,000 decrease over last year's funding amount. This reduction, however, did not affect the committee's preliminary allocations, as the total public service requests were still under the total available funding in this category. As required by HUD regulations, the Draft Action Plan for 1920 was released for a 30-year, 30-day public review period on April 5th. The Draft Action Plan contains the preliminary allocations recommended by the committee. Concurrent with this year's action plan, staff is presenting an amended citizen participation plan necessitated by recent changes to the city's exception percentage and low-mod income areas. The citizen participation plan followed the same public review period as the action plan. It is recommended that the City Council adopt the committee's funding recommendations and make the final determination of projects and programs to be funded in fiscal year 1920. Adopt the amendments of the citizen participation plan and authorize submission of the action plan and amended citizen participation plan to HUD. This concludes staff's presentation, and we are available for your questions.
Thank you. Any councilmember have questions of staff?
Actually, just a quick, just so I understand. Am I correct in understanding that the allotment is 15% for public service, 20% for administration, and 65% for capital improvement? Is that the breakdown that is, that we are required to remain within for those funds? Is that correct?
The public service does have a maximum of 15% of the entitlement.
Okay.
The administration part also has a maximum percent of the entitlement, which is 20%. The other fund, which is capital improvement, does not have the maximum amount.
Gotcha. And the three applications that were received, the amounts that were approved, basically, that was the amounts that they were asking for, is that correct?
That is correct.
Was there any encouragement from staff to change those amounts anyway, or is it a negotiated discussion, or is it just, I'm just curious how it works, if, or...
No, the applications were within, the amounts requested were within the guidelines, and the funding that is allocated for that particular category, which is the public service, there is enough...
Gotcha. Well, and I guess the reason I'm asking these questions, I did, in my addition, those three projects together probably equaled about 14.8%. So they were just right under, is that right?
That is correct.
Okay. And so theoretically, 0.2% could still be allocated to one of those groups, but not likely.
The policy is not to award more than the request?
Okay. Okay, thank you, that's helpful.
Any other questions of staff? No? Okay. Is there anyone in City Council Chamber wishing to be heard on this matter? Public? Okay. Having none, we'll close the public hearing portion. Now, are there any comments or questions from members of the City Council? Comments or questions?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt the Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee's funding recommendation and make the final determination of projects and programs to be funded in fiscal year 2019-20, adopt the amendments to the citizen participation plan, and authorize a submission of fiscal year 2019-20 Action Plan and the amended citizen participation plan to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Second.
Call for the vote.
Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, the next item on the agenda is a new business item 8A, Approval to Implement Enhancements to the City's Crossing Guard Program. And Ron Fujiwaki is here for this presentation.
Good evening again, Mayor Mashburn and councilmembers. This evening, staff is recommending that the City Council approve the implementation of various enhancements to the city's crossing guard program. The city manages, oh, forgot the slides. There we go. The city manages 12 crossing guard locations, and staff has determined that the 12 locations would benefit from the implementation of various modifications to enhance safety for both the pedestrians and crossing guards. So here, obviously, we have the 12 locations throughout the city. Most of them are on the major highways, most of them are at signalized intersections. So one of our first steps is to redo the plain crosswalk that you see on the left with what we call a ladder crosswalk, for perhaps obvious reasons. And you can see that it's much, much more visible to the pedestrian as well as the motorists. This is a vehicle, from the vehicle view, the one on the left, you can barely make out the yellow crosswalk lines, whereas the one on the right, it's very, it demonstrates obvious visibility. In addition to the crosswalks, we're going to enhance the signing approaching the crosswalks with some school, schoolchildren pedestrian crossing signs, as well as advanced warning. In addition, we want to upgrade our stop paddles to the LED type that will light up. You can see it unlit on, obviously, on the left and lit up on the right. And finally, we want to purchase some better traffic cones. Right now, they're just plain yellow. We want to purchase the cones that have some reflective stripings to, obviously, make it more noticeable to the, to the motorists. If approved this evening, staff plans to have all the crossing guard enhancements in place prior to the start of the school district's 2019-20 school year. That concludes staff report, and we're available for questions.
Questions of...
I have a question.
Yes.
I like all your enhancements, these are great. Anything that helps provide visibility and safety out there is outstanding. I do want to find out, though, if there's a possibility, you could probably come back to us with a report later on. I was driving through the city of Las Vegas a couple weeks ago, and I noticed that a lot of their school crossings, they have very elaborate signage and crosswalks that actually light during the day, they flashlights on the signs. I'd like to have, like, just a cost estimate, is what's something like that cost? Maybe not doing the crosswalk itself, but like, putting up where the crosswalk sign is, having that sign illuminated that flashes when there is a crossing guard there that maybe she or he can activate at the location? Something, just giving us a ballpark figure what that costs.
We can look into that. Matter of fact, maybe I'll take a field trip.
There you go.
To Clark County.
I found a new game, too.
Clark County, exactly.
I found a new game, I'll let you know later, it was pretty fun.
There you go. Yeah, we can look into that and get a memo to council box.
I hate to disappoint you, but we have a trip to Clark County coming up. We'll handle that for you.
Oh, okay, thank you very much.
Just a quick question. I noticed when I go by, they currently do have one of the cones, but it's usually just one little one, and it's kind of like stuck there, and it's really hard to see unless you're the first car. So can we possibly look into maybe more than one, or more than one cone at location? I don't know how it would work, just maybe just a thought.
Yeah, we can look into that, perhaps one on each side of the street in the direction you're traveling.
Right, something, yeah, because they're not, it's not always real visible right there. Perfect, thanks, Ron.
So I have two questions for you. The first question is, how many of these crossing guard locations are near schools? Are all of them near schools?
Yes, exactly. Or a block away from the school.
Okay. And my other question is, are the ladder crosswalks going to be just across the main thoroughfare or across the other roads as well? Because, you know, I have two children in middle school and high school here in Simi Valley Public Schools, and a lot of times I'll see the ladder crosswalks, but they're only across the main thoroughfare. For example, when I drive to Hillside, it's only across Fitzgerald, but it's not the other way. And so when cars are turning right or turning left onto Fitzgerald, they don't have that ladder, you know, that, that, the ladder crosswalks. So I wanted to know where we're going to paint the ladder crosswalks. Is it just going to be the main thoroughfare, or is it going to be the side thoroughfares as well? Because there's kids that are crossing there as well, parents who are crossing with their kids there as well. And so, you know, that's, I just wanted to know where the ladder crosswalks are going to be, and if that's a possibility to do as well.
This, this particular phase, we are going to put the ladder crosswalks at those locations where the crossing guard is actually using the crosswalk. We can, however, obviously, look at some of the side street crosswalks, and if those, as you indicate, are being used by school-aged pedestrians, we can, we can probably paint those as well, and then go from there. I know that in the city of Los Angeles, a lot of times, you'll see them painted on all four legs of the intersection, so we'll see what we can do on that.
That's what, that's what I was referencing, because that's what, I work in LUSD, so that's where I see it. My other question, I'm sorry, I have one more question, is, is there any possibility of doing scramble, you know, sidewalks, scramble crossings? I'm thinking in front of, most of the schools that I think of, but in front of Santa Susana High School, you know, there's that one, that one intersection where, you know, if there was a scramble crosswalk, it might be more efficient, both for traffic and the pedestrians, and I've seen studies that have shown that. So where you have large intersections, where they're crossing both pedestrians and you have a lot of vehicle traffic, I don't know if that's a possibility to look into for the future, since we're going to be looking into lights as well.
I think those are among the traffic issues that we're trying to look at throughout the community. It might be difficult at crossing guard locations, because if it's a scramble, the crossing guard can only really go one direction. But it's certainly a conversation that we can have with traffic and figure out, can we implement that in, in various areas of the community, in commercial areas as well as others?
Yeah, and definitely adjacent. I would hope that would be a consideration in areas that are adjacent to the schools, so...
Sure.
Like Galena and Cochran, where there's a lot of students that are crossing there, which we don't, I don't believe those are crossing guard there, but that would be an ideal place, so...
Sequoia.
Yeah, Sequoia. Yeah, Sequoia.
Yes.
I have, I think more of a comment, Ron. I just recently saw on television, and I think it was possibly a student had designed a crosswalk that's painted three D. And I'm only, I, don't get me wrong, I fully appreciate what you're doing and the somewhat quick reaction time to the recent tragedies that we had. But I asked that you take a look at that and see if it's as good as it appeared on TV. And I think it would be no more expense than your ladder-type crosswalk, but it's certainly, according to the television reporter and those that have used that three D effect, which, for the people watching, the three D makes it look like, almost like a speed bump, like you're going to hit something that's up in the air. And it, it really slows people down, because they think they're going to hit a big bump, and they don't.
Yeah, I saw that news story, too, and it kind of intrigued me, so we, we are going to track down what city it was in and take a look at that.
Okay, great, that's, that was my comment, thank you.
And I, I did have a quick question, but I think you answered it. In fact, this morning, knowing we were going to be discussing this, I was looking carefully, and I passed, I realized, twelve, seven, and six, as I went up Cochran driving this morning, your lovely map, I saw all crossing guards at all, those three spots. But my question, because I was looking very closely, not all of them are at even necessarily a major intersection, I mean, there, obviously, there's crossing there. And so the intention is to put the ladder crosswalk, I assume, across the major thoroughfare, and then, as we've just discussed, likely the side. So wherever there are those twelve locations, you would, that ladder would theoretically be on all, because I know they take, they cross different...
Initially, the, the ladder will be in the crosswalk that the crossing guard is using to get the children across. So if it's going across, if the crossing guard is helping them cross Cochran...
And I guess some of them cross couples, I mean, like the one at Tapo Canyon.
Sometimes they do, sometimes they don't, but we'll take, like I say, in response, we'll, we'll make some field observations of how the crossing guard is working, and we may be able to add ladders at the other legs as well.
Well, and I have to be honest, initially, I thought fourteen thousand dollars to paint stripes, but then I, and I thought, this looks like a really good Eagle project, that was, then, but, but, I know you're using special paint, special way of doing it all, and so I just want you to know, I'm not advocating that, but I just thought I'd share my thought process. So, I think it's a good thing.
I have one more question for you, Ron. Are any of these, you know, I notice in the picture, this street looks pretty, you know, part of it is breaking up there, are any of these crosswalks going to be paved soon? And if they are going to be paved or resurfaced, will we, I assume we're going to paint after the resurfacing?
Yes, we'll double-check the list, but I don't think any of them are, or will be involved in any of our current resurfacing projects, but naturally, we'll double-check.
Okay, I would hate for us to paint it, and then it gets resurfaced, and we got to do it all over again.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Here are motion.
I move to approve implementing enhancements to crossing guard locations throughout the city. Second.
Call for the vote?
All right, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, the next item on the agenda is Nine A, City Council Board Member and Special District Member Reports. Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Littler.
Just a, a few things I'd like to share. On April twenty-fourth, I had the opportunity to be part of some of the great things that our school district is doing. I know that Councilmember Judge was there, and I suspect others of you were there as well throughout the week, but at Knolls Elementary School, they had a math-focused PBL on redesigning the Simi Town Center. And it was delightful to see what the kids came up with solutions for the town center. One thing I learned is that they all want a Dave and Buster's there, just, just saying. I also learned that some of them thought that candy stores should be larger than the supermarket that was going to be there. But it was really a delight to see what our students are doing, and they were very engaged, and had, really did have some lovely ideas. And then later that day, I was able to judge the annual science fair at Township Elementary School, and I will tell you, we have some brilliant, brilliant students, and so it was fun, fun to be part of that. I thought I should share that on April twenty-seventh, Saturday, that was, I think I referenced, that's when we had that lovely kickoff for our fifty-year anniversary celebration, and the Strathair Historical Park Museum did a wonderful job of, and I commend our, our city officials who were involved with that and had the visions, Samantha and others, to make it such a delightful event. But everything from fifty-year-old cars to fashion shows to music to, it just was a stellar event. And so I anticipate there'll be more wonderful events that we can attend to commemorate this great city. And then, I wanted to mention that Councilmember Luvenos and myself, on Monday, April twenty-ninth, had the opportunity of interviewing for the Arts Commission, and there were five outstanding candidates, any one of which would have done a very fine job. And I wanted to commend David Yoshitomi, who put together the packets and was there to facilitate the whole process from the city, and just what a fine job he did. And I wanted to encourage the others that were not selected to please be on the foundation, the Arts Foundation, because they all would be just outstanding there. Other, well, there are other lovely things that happened, but I think that that, this week, but I think also it was great to go to the Simi Ed Foundation Teacher of the Month at White Oak Elementary and commend the staff there. But, you know, I should, I got to say, and I know that all of you, and you're going to say it, but the, something about the Simi Valley Street Fair that was this Saturday, what a great activity that is for our community, and it was wonderful to, and I wanted to commend our city official, our city employees who were there on Saturday, answering questions and providing information, and I learned quite a bit as I walked the streets and talked to them, but it really was a wonderful event. I know the entire, the Chamber of Commerce sponsors and puts together, but the entire community loves, and so it was great to, to be at that and attend that and be part of that. So that concludes my thoughts, comments.
Okay. Councilmember Luvenos.
On Saturday, April twenty-seventh, I too attended the, I attended the Simi Valley Time Warp, the fiftieth anniversary at Strathair Historical Park and Museum. I had no idea we had a water slide here. I think we should bring it back. But it was really fun to go and see where, where we were and where we are today. And for everyone who went and wore their tie dye, that was really fun, to see everyone in their tie dye. On Monday, April twenty-ninth, Councilwoman Littler and I did the Arts Commission interviews, and again, a lot of stellar candidates, and we chose, too, that we know will do a phenomenal job. On Thursday, May second, and Friday, May third, I attended the Southern California Association of Governments Conference. I also attended as a member of the Board of Directors of the Clean Power Alliance. It's a phenomenal program where we got to collaborate, meet with other city officials and people who are doing phenomenal jobs. Phenomenal research with GIS, met some students there who did some great research on the wholeness, and a lot of students who had a lot of wonderful ideas, ways to make sure that we move forward, make sure that we have housing for our children and the generations beyond, as well as making sure that we use clean, green energy, and that we plan for the long-term future of our city. So it was inspirational conference with a lot of ideas. Mayor Mashburn attended as well, as a delegate, and Councilman Judge as well, as a representative of VCTC. On Saturday, May fourth, I also attended the Simi Valley Street Fair. I didn't even get through all of it, because there was so much, and I was there three hours. But it was a great event, and thank you to Samantha Argabright and the Chamber of Commerce for putting on these wonderful fiftieth anniversary events and making sure that our city is highlighted. That's all.
Councilmember Judge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Saturday, April twenty-seventh, I attended the Simi Valley Police Foundation's Gala Dinner, honoring the contributors to the Simi Valley Police Foundation and awarding some citizens some awards for their volunteerism through the Police Foundation. On Wednesday, May first, through Friday, I was also at the Southern California Association of Government, as Councilmember Luvenos stated. The Southern California Association of Governments, it's their general, I forgot what they called it, it's a, it was a regional conference meeting, but it was also a general assembly. And the general assembly brings people from all over the SCAG area to the conference, and it was a very good conference. I was there representing the VCTC, and there was only, there was only one thing on transportation that went on the, the three days. But otherwise, it was a great conference, it was a great conference. We did learn some stuff that's coming down the pike, which might not be too beneficial for our city, such as SB fifty from Sacramento, which would take away local control of zoning. So I think the city needs to be wary of that and keep an eye on that bill, it's moving through, I think it's out of committee right now, and it's moving, can't remember where it's going right now, I think it's going into its funding committee. On Saturday, I'm sorry, yeah, Saturday, Saturday, May fourth, I too attended the street fair, always a great event, and this time it seemed like it was bigger. The parking was definitely better, so give a message to the Chamber of Commerce, they did a good job on the parking this time, the mall wasn't crazy like it was last year, and the police department did a great job controlling the intersections. I think everything moved smoothly through there, and I had somebody drop me off and pick me up, so I didn't contribute to the problem. And so, and they said they can move through there without a problem, so that was a great job on, on both the Chamber of Commerce and the police department's part for keeping that going. Later that afternoon, I attended the grand opening on behalf of the City Council, along with the mayor and Councilmember Littler, at the Belissima Spa, which is the old bank building over there by Ralph's, and it's a, it doesn't look anything like a bank. It's a fantastic location, they decorated it, it was very beautiful. And it was well done, I mean, talk about a glamorous event, it was probably one of the most glamorous events I've seen in Simi Valley in a long time. That's my report.
Thank you. Mayor Potem Kavanaugh.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Saturday, April twenty-seventh, I also attended the Police Foundation Dinner, and I would like to say congrats to our own mayor, Ann Fred Thomas, who were the chairs of the event, they did a great job.
Thank you.
You're welcome. On Thursday, May second, I actually took a half-day from work, so I got really busy. I was able to represent us at the National Day of Prayer, which was here, right outside our library. That was very nice, they had a great, a great turnout and a, and a great event, met some very nice people. And we had, I think, six different pastors from the area, all spoke, and it was very nice for everyone to hear them. I was able to attend with Councilmember Littler, the Simi Valley Education Foundation's Teacher of the Month at White Oak Elementary, that was the first one I was able to attend. I know Elaine's been doing it and the mayor, and I really enjoyed that. It was really nice to see how excited the teachers get and, and how appreciative they are of everything. Also, that same afternoon, I was able to watch Royal High School's first-round CIF softball, they won. But I would like to congratulate, we have a lot of teams in CIF right now, between softball, baseball, lacrosse, so good, good luck to all of them, and congrats on any wins that they get. On Saturday, May fourth, I also attended the street fair, and I actually worked at the Simi Valley Police Foundation booth for the afternoon. A lot of great people walking by, great turnout, people watching is always fun, I really enjoy all the dogs, get to pet, pet all the dogs, it's a really good thing. So we have a board member, Jill Haney, here from the chamber. Please pass on that you guys did a great job, again, a wonderful event, really appreciated it. And that's it for me, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Let's see, Wednesday, April twenty-fourth, I went with Maureen Dick Jennings to Santa Clarita and looked at some special veteran housing that they have in Santa Clarita. It's, even though it's partially occupied, it's not going to be fully open until first of June, I believe. Very, very interesting what they're doing for seniors out there. And it's, it's nice housing, it's for, I would say, some, somewhat special needs seniors, and they will go so far as if, excuse me, veterans, veterans. And they'll go so far, if you, if you had a disabled veteran that is wheelchair-bound, they build showers specifically for them in their own personal units. And it, it's just amazing, all the work that goes into it, to make these veterans comfortable in, in a great setting. And there's also, it's well-designed for families of veterans, and parks specifically designed for children of veterans. Sometimes there's a high incidence of autism and what have you in some of these vets, families, and so the parks are designed specifically for them. But it's a beautiful place, if you get the opportunity, check with me, and I can tell you where it's located. Of course, what, they, they would love to be in Simi Valley, but it's, the land is the issue, they need land to accomplish that. The place I went was probably twelve or fifteen acres, and I forgot how many units, but it was, it was really informative and something to see. Later, let's see, it was on Wednesday, April twenty-fourth, I met with Rovner Construction regarding the, the project they want to build up on Walnut. I too attended the Police Foundation Dinner, and I have to say, hats off to the Police Foundation, they raised roughly, don't hold me to it, but roughly fifty thousand dollars that will go directly to our police department for different programs and for the K nine program. And it was a, it was a well-attended, good event, and I have to say that Mr. Q Hong, who owns the Hummingbird Nest Ranch, was a huge contributor and also brought some outstanding entertainment. So a special thanks to him. And of course, anything that goes to the Police Foundation basically ends up coming to the city, so it's a good thing. Oh, let's see, on Tuesday, April thirtieth, I met with some folks regarding five G. And then Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, I also attended the Southern California Association of Governments. And what I pulled out of there, I, I, this one panel discussion really struck me, because they're talking about the obvious need for housing and affordable housing, and, and I, they're experts on it and what have you, and one gentleman stood up and he said, he goes, "How can it possibly be affordable with the fees that government are charging us to build?" And I thought, wow, that, that's an area that we can start working on, you know? But, so there are some, I like to call everything, uh, speed bumps, they're not necessarily block wall roadblocks, but there's some speed bumps we have to deal with to be able to, to provide the housing that we need to provide. Saturday, May fourth, I too went to the street fair, and I'm going to take a little survey here, how many of you took the shuttle? Hmm, see? Because, I took the shuttle from Madera up on the hill, and it was smooth as can be, they dropped me right off at the street fair, and it, it was, it worked great, whatever, not whatever, obviously, the chamber reworked the parking issue, and with the shuttle process, it was as smooth as can be. And when it was time for me to leave, went right back where they dropped me off, and there they were, and up the hill, and my car was there, everything, it was great. Not to mention that the street fair itself was great and entertaining and full of information. I too attended the grand opening of Belissima Spa. And today, this morning, I was able to go to the school district headquarters and present about fifteen or twenty certificates of commendation to the intervention teachers of the district. It's not often that they're recognized, I was very happy that the school district, number one, chose to recognize the intervention teachers, because my daughter happens to be one. And secondly, I was very appreciative that they asked me to attend and pass out the commendations. And it was, it was a very nice event, and it's amazing what these intervention teachers do. And... teachers do, and obviously, the school district recognizes their value and is proud of everything they do. So with that, that's the end of my report. With one exception, I was going to thank DeeDee and, of course, Ruth, for going to the Simi Ed Foundation and presenting the Teacher of the Month when I was, and wait, did you?
It's okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's all right.
Elaine, I'm sorry, Ruth was with us at SCAG. Okay, I apologize, but anyway, thank you, DeeDee, for taking care of that, and also the National Day of Prayer, because I wanted to be there and obviously couldn't.
I apologize to you that you're not there.
All right, thank, thank you very much. Okay, that's it. Now we go to 9B. Now, remember, 9B doesn't mean we have to put something on the agenda, and remember, everything we put on the agenda creates work for our hard-working staff, so. Anybody want to put anything on the agenda? Okay, thank you. And tonight, we're going to, yeah, close in memory of a friend of Mayor Protim Kavanaugh's, Mary Kay McCormick. Meeting's adjourned.